All right, thank you so much, Mr. Guarino, and welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. We have a couple of items on our agenda. The first is the Personnel Recommendations. Everybody got a revised copy of the Personnel Recommendations after 5:00 p.m. this evening, so if you don't have them up, you're able to pull that up quickly, that was great. Ms. Johnson, you had your hand raised?
Yes, thank you. I just want to let everybody know that I'm not home, so you might see somebody coming in and out behind me, but there's nobody influencing me at this meeting. I just wanted to let everybody know.
Hi.
And also, I just wanted to find out if we can have a moment for Board members' comments at the end of the meeting, please, before we make a motion to adjourn.
Um, I'm sure we can allow that if the board wills it. We do need to take a brief non-public to discuss some of those contracts. I know, Ms. Johnson, you had indicated to me earlier today that you wanted to ask a couple of questions before we vote on those contracts. So I would propose doing Board member comments, then the non-public, and then we can take our vote at the very end.
Thank you very much.
If that makes sense to everyone. So I will ask for, I will ask for you to make a motion to allow that as soon as we're done with the Board member, with the Personnel Recommendations.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Ms. Timmons. I can't see everybody, by the way. I do see Ms. Timmons, but I see four people.
I move to approve the Personnel Recommendation Revised Copy dated August 10th, 2020.
Second.
Ms. Oden, thank you, Ms. Timmons. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. On, I see the resignations and I see the nominations, and these are basically just to replace the staff that's leaving or these new hires coming in for other positions, because I was trying to match everything up today.
May I respond?
Yes, please, Ms. O'Gara, that would be helpful.
Okay, the resignations, they're still happening. So all the resignations, they're leaving, like number one, two, three. The nominations are new staff coming on. All of them are brand-new.
Okay.
I would also like to talk to, two things, to Elm Street Principal. So the last day for the principal is this Friday. We are moving a per-DM subadministrator over to Elm Street to represent the principal, because we posted the position, we have to wait 10 days, and we have to go through a hiring process. In the meantime, schools were getting ready to start school. So we, I don't know if some of you have met Mario Andrade. He was one of the finalists for Assistant Superintendent. He was helping out at Elm, so we're gonna move him to Elm. And also, on the CTE Director, his last day is the 24th, but he has said that he is gonna continue to work with us through the end of August to help with the Perkins Grant.
Can I just build on my question here a little bit?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. So we're having one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight new positions, not new, but coming in. Given the state of affairs with the school, where we're not opening very much, we're remote, we're remoting, we're opening, nobody knows what's going on with the emails. Every one of these positions needed in the district? Because with the amount of schooling we're having, I can't see all these positions being needed in the school. If we were in school, full-time, in school, I would say yes, but I'm kind of questioning are all these positions needed at this point in time? Thank you.
I would ask administrators or Ms. O'Gara to just jump in, because I cannot see everybody and I don't want to miss a hand for answering questions. Oh, thank you, Ms. Cancela.
So, yes, I believe, Mrs. Johnson, that all these positions, and Garth can jump in, we need all these positions. The union is asking, has actually been asking us if we're asking teachers to do double duty with the amount of teachers that we already have. But yes, we do, we have so far 87 teachers that we have hired with today's list. And I do have the numbers for the positions that are open whenever you want to hear that.
Thank you, Ms. O'Gara. Did that answer your questions, Ms. Johnson?
Well, you know, it's just saying that the union says we need all these teachers, and we're going down to quarter-time in the schools. We're not even at half-time or full-time, and we're hiring more teachers. I have a hard time convincing myself and probably the community that all these teachers are needed when some of them are gonna be in school a half-day, two-and-a-half-days. It just, it just doesn't make sense here. And, you know, the plan isn't even out there. Parents are questioning what's gonna really happen with the opening of schools, so I'm not gonna support these teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Dr. McKinney, and then I saw Ms. Brown.
Just for clarity, these are budgeted positions that are already in the budget. These are not new hires. And in fairness to the teachers, they are teaching five days a week, they are working with kids. The early release day doesn't mean they're at home on Netflix. There is other work to be done and other expectations. So when and if we get to a point where enrollment doesn't match up with our staffing, then we'll follow the process for reductions in accordance with all the contractual bargaining units and the MOUs with the union. But in all fairness, I think we all need the support in the beginning, for the first month, to support kids, educators, our schools, our parents. It's a community effort. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Brown, and then Mr. Guarino.
Dr. McKinney, when you say these are budgeted positions, are these new hires that we had added into the budget for the 2021 school year? Or are these replacements for teachers who are already in the district? That have moved on to another positions or things like that? So can I get some clarification on that, and then I have a follow-up?
I can answer that, Garth. These are mostly, I don't think that, there are only a few new positions to share, and that was put in the budget. This is mostly people who are leaving the district or going on L.O.A., or have resigned. These are mostly the resignations, the retirements already came before.
So you're confirming that this list are all people who are replacing teachers who are currently in the district or have moved on to other places in the district? So these are jobs that are already available, they are not new positions?
You can see on each and every nomination sheet who that person is replacing and what, and what was the circumstance for that replacement? If you look at your, I'm trying to find mine. If you look at the individual nomination sheet, you'll see that they, what they are. We've got a retirement. The, the social workers that you see, they were repped, and the position, it's under Title I grant. They were repped, those positions have been reinstated. And we have a couple more positions under Title I that we're gonna post, because we have the money to reinstate the positions. Like, three social workers, one of them, the library media specialist transferred to the open position at North. One's a retirement, it was very hard to find that person. Another person from Penachuk, she had transferred to another position where somebody else had that vacant position. One is, another one is retirement. Math, math is very hard to find. And then, and like I said, the Title I. And one is for our new Assistant Principal at Broad Street Elementary, who came from Sunset High.
Thank you very much, Ms. O'Gara.
You're welcome.
My, so the one that I was a little bit concerned with was number eight on the nomination sheet. Is that a position that was before a part-time position? Or is that a full-time position in 1920?
Okay, it's funny you should have asked that, Ms. Brown. There is, because there is a .6 French teacher position that is still open, and this was a full-time Spanish teacher who we retired. Foreign languages, math, science, all difficult to find. Matter of fact, we had a person already go through the board for that position, and then she backed out. And you, who put her resignation before your, before you, and this is Mrs. Coffey's second candidate for that Spanish position.
Thank you. I don't know. I, I'm kind of, I, like, I'm glad that you're, if these are just, if these are honestly just replacing teachers who are already in the district, that's fine. If any, we want to add any more positions, I think it's gonna be very important that we wait until after we have some more information coming in from the Remote Learning Task Force, so we can see how we can use those, use those, that new human capital in different ways. Thank you.
I also just wanna add that we are adding back the other Title I teacher positions that are under the Title I grant. And I do believe, Mr. Chofa, that we need more ELL teachers.
I recognize that those are coming out of a different budget, and that's different.
All right.
Yeah, we absolutely have already approved in our budget the ELL. So, sorry, my dog decided to run very loudly in the room. Dr. McKinney, did you have your hand up a second ago?
Thank you. I would just share, we wouldn't bring a new position to the board and just have it on the Personnel Recommendations. We'd have to go through a process, and basically Dan would have to sign off matching the position with funding, and then bring it to the board for approval. So anything that's coming forward in the recommendations would be for positions that are already included in our budget.
Thank you very much, Dr. McKinney. That's actually the sentence I was waiting to hear. Thank you.
Yes, and that would be correct. We wouldn't be hiring people anytime unless it was a budgeted position. Most, these are all replacements, from what I can tell. The only new positions we have this year, we have the ELL positions, which I've mentioned previously, and we had some special ed program positions. We really, we didn't add any classroom or high school teachers in this year's budget.
All right, thank you, Dr. McKinney and Mr. Donovan. Next, I have Mr. Guarino, and then Ms. Oden had asked to speak using the chat feature.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I will support this motion, and I want to correct something that was said before. This is not what the union wants. This is what administration is putting forward and says that we need. I do support our teachers, and I just want to remind people they have had a lot of adjustments to make with their regular routine. They've had to make, make a lot of changes in the way they, they teach, and it, and they're putting in a lot of hours. So people think that they're not working a full day, they certainly are. And our student numbers are the same. I mean, they're pretty much the same. We still have the same number of students that we need to reach, and it's even harder to reach, reach them than it was before. So, so I will support this, this motion, and, and I will support our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Oden?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you, and we'll miss Mr. Atwell at Elm Street and Mr. McQuilkin in the CTE program. They both have done absolutely great jobs in their positions. And I, I think Nashua's loss is other districts' gain. So I wish them both good luck, and I'm sorry to see them leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie Oden. I echo that sentiment. So wishing both of them happiness and success in their new roles. Do we have any other questions or comments on Ms. Timmons' motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations? Okay, I don't see any. Mr. Guarino, please go ahead and call the roll.
Okay. On the motion, I just learned how to pronounce Mr. McQuilkin's name now, and he's leaving, but that's the way it goes. On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
I have eight yeses, one, I'm sorry, seven, seven yeses and one no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. O'Gara, you had said that you have some rough numbers for us on open positions?
Yep, we have 13 teaching positions open. There's six at the elementary, three at the high school, and two at the middle school, and we have six long-term subs so far. Long-term subs cover maternity leaves and medical circumstance. So that's, we're doing pretty well.
Yeah, I, actually, that's very encouraging. I know, then, we also have CTE and the principal position, but I really appreciate the quick actions of administration to put somebody in that role so that school can get started smoothly for Elm Street. And I'm excited to see that we, this feels like a low number compared to other years, so.
It does, yeah.
So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Timmons, did you have anything else under Personnel this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Timmons. So the next item that I had on the agenda was our Legal Services Contract, which I believe we need a short, non-public to do. Ms. Johnson, you had asked to make a motion regarding having some Board member comments before we do that?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow at least 15 minutes for Board member comments this evening, since we haven't had this in a while.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on Ms. Johnson's motion? Ms. Gilio?
I'm just clarifying that she means 15 minutes total for all of us and not 15 minutes for each of us.
Yes, total.
Okay, good, that's an important distinction. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Guarino, if you could call the roll?
On the motion to allow Board comments, Ms. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, why don't you go ahead and start us off? And then I'll just go around based on my screen.
Thank you very much. I wish I did not have to make a Board comment like this tonight. But unfortunately, I think that, I've said it before, when I came on this Board, I shook everybody's hand, and I said I looked forward to getting along with everybody and working with everybody. But unfortunately, there's a Board member that if you send in requests that you've said publicly, this Board member sends out emails, and they're not very nice. It's not about my political affiliation, but I have an act to grind. It's that I was elected equally, like everybody else is on this Board. And I'm gonna say it directly to Mr. Guarino, I'm tired of the nasty emails that you send. And I would appreciate it that it stops right now. I came on the Board to work with everybody, and I expect to work with everybody. And the last email was unpalatable. And you've done it to me before about my political affiliation. Enough is enough. This is a nonpartisan election, and I don't expect to be treated with this respect that targeted me, to try to intimidate me. This is not gonna continue. And it's sad that I have to bring this out publicly, but I think this is the only way, maybe you'll just stop once and for all. I respect everybody on this Board, I respect everybody's comments, but I don't expect these emails from you anymore. So please stop it, and let's move on in life, and let's do what we have to do on the Board. If I ask something from administration and I was told to put it in writing on Monday, so hopefully we could have it by Wednesday, I did what I was asked to do. It was all public information. You've tried to go on the estimate a couple of times with the right to no law. Everything was said publicly. Enough is enough is enough. With that said, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Can I speak?
No.
Madam President?
We're not, this is not doing, we're not doing a back-and-forth. We asked for Board. Excuse me! Mr. Guarino!
I'm, I have a point of information.
I'm going to.
The motion was public speaking for each and every one of us, so I'm just asking you if I could have my turn.
I'm, I'm telling you, no. What I said at the beginning of this was that I would go around my screen based on the order of people's faces. I wrote it down where everybody is sitting, based on their faces, and I will go by my list.
I'm waiting.
Thank you. I can't hear you. Yeah, I muted myself, irritated. Ms. Oden, you are sitting next to Ms. Johnson on my screen. And then if people want the order, I have Ms. Oden, Ms. Bishop, Ms. Timmons, Ms. Brown, Mr. Guarino, and Ms. Gilio.
Okay. I would just like to ask that some answers to the questions. Board members are getting a lot of questions about the reopening and the survey. And I think somewhere, we need to publicly have those questions posted, because a lot of them are the same ones coming from different people. And it's silly for us all to try to answer them, and a lot of them, we don't have the answers to. So I, I would just request that there be one place that our constituents and our stakeholders can ask questions and get an answer, and they should be public so that everybody can see the answers. That would save a lot of time. And I have to say, I'm disappointed that it did not say on the survey, if people chose the hybrid, that there would be childcare for their children after school. I explicitly asked for that at the last Board meeting, and it's not there. And I, I'm sad, because I've gotten a couple of questions from people about that issue. That's, that's all I, I just think that's important for our stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Next, I have Ms. Bishop.
Hi. I have nothing to say, so continue on.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Timmons?
I, I'm, Ms. Bishop, with nothing to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I appreciate all the hard work everybody's doing in the district to get this stuff off the ground. I want to echo Ms. Oden and Ms. Johnson's desire to have more public information, especially as parents in this next couple of weeks here are making some really important decisions about their kids' education. It's a long-term commitment for the next several months. And it's really intimidating, and I think it's ratcheting up people's level of anxiety. So I think we could be more forthcoming about how we are striving to improve remote learning from the springtime efforts and be very clear with the public about that and with the Board, because quite honestly, we don't really have that information. I think it would do a lot to sage the stress that's going on and the contention. I, just as just a side bonus, we will be having a Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting on August 17th. It is after the designated time for the survey to go out, but we're probably, hopefully, gonna be talking about some things during that meeting that are gonna be moving forward for the remote learning piece of this puzzle and bringing some things before the full Board for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak. But what Ms. Johnson said was false, absolutely false. And I don't like, I don't like it when she's accusing me of something that I didn't do. Make all of my emails public. They're already public anyways. They weren't nasty. I just asked her to follow the rules, just like everybody else. So all I did was ask her to follow the rules. Some people think that they can run the whole show, and there's the problem. We had that problem previously, and you know who she's associated with. Those people, they try to run this Board. All I'm asking is for that the democratic process be played out the way it's supposed to be, and that some people do not dominate this Board. And I asked her to follow the rules. It's all I did. And now she's accusing me of being nasty. I was not nasty, okay? Make them public. Take all the emails, make them public. But do not accuse me of doing things falsely. You're wrong. I didn't, I was not nasty towards you, you're very wrong, okay? And, and I will ask anybody else to follow the rules too. But we have a democratic process here. We have some people who come on this Board and think they can intimidate everybody else and, and run the show, and be the tail that wags the dog. And, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go for that. This is a democratic process. Thank you.
Ms. Gilio?
Hi. I, I do have a few things to say, and I'm really glad that Dr. McKinney and Mr. Parker are here tonight, even though we don't have Mr. Mosley with us. Dr. Mosley, who is on a well-deserved vacation. But I know that there have been a lot of questions from the public to, some of us get more emails than others, but there's a lot of concern around a better description of the remote plan. And also, a lot of parents are concerned that if they sign up for hybrid and they're become, they're, they experience some sort of illness within their family or, or something that makes them uncomfortable in the way the buildings are being maintained or whatever, that they don't want their child to continue to go to school. They would like the right to be able to make that transition from hybrid to remote at some point. We've received a lot of emails about that. And I, I understand that we're putting together, and Ms. Cancela can agree with this, we're putting together frequently asked questions, and there are a lot of people working on it. But I'm not sure that they're gonna be available in time to help these parents who have been asked to make a decision about their child's education by this Friday, the 14th. So I'm, I'm not sure what the solution to that is, but I, I think that if we could do something to get their questions answered sooner, then I think that the responses that we get to their choice of education for their children will be way more accurate and will be working with much better data. So I'm kind of throwing that out there.
Can I respond? Can I?
Sure, Mr. Parker, go ahead.
Hi, and just want you to know that I've been tasked with trying to flush out remote learning, but I needed the team there. And so at least secondary administrative leadership, which is happening this week. We hope to have more detailed comments about grading and assessments and what kids and families can expect for remote learning. So I just wanted to say that. So we should have that by weeks in, the agenda opened up. Those are the middle and high school teams. That's on our agenda to come out of the Administrative Institute with details for middle and high school. Wanted to say that. I hope that's helpful a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parker. That's, that's very good news. Dr. McKinney?
I just wanted to add to that, that this week we have our summer admin meetings with our principals and directors.
our principals and directors, and our district office meeting tomorrow, so we can speak about the FAQs, childcare, and remote instruction, and provide an update by the end of the week. Also, if there are questions that board members are getting that we can support with, if you could forward those to myself or Mr. Parker, we'll make sure we get folks the answers they need. Probably made about five to seven phone calls with parents today, just explaining some things, so we're happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. McKinney and Mr. Parker. As a, both a parent and a board member, I'm encouraged to hear that this work is ongoing. I have to say, I, I was understanding the frustrations of parents this week, because I don't know what, you know, what the best choice is, and I'm a little frustrated because the original motion back in May was to have both plans to the board by the end of July. So I'm looking forward to this one. Perhaps a compromise might be to extend the deadline from Friday to Wednesday or something, so that if the facts, the FAQs are done and posted by Friday, parents at least have a few days to read those, get their questions answered, and then could make their selection, as opposed to trying to do it blindly, or, you know, getting it Friday and having to feel like they have to answer Friday. So I don't know, we don't, you don't have to say right now, but that's just a thought. Dr. McKinney?
Could we consult with the district office team tomorrow and get back to you with a happy compromise, if you, if that's what you want to call it?
Yes, because I just thought of this right now, sitting here, so I don't know. So I just came right out of my mouth while I was here. So, yes, please, talk to your staff, see if that's possible, and then let us know. I think we have finance and ops tomorrow night, which is not exactly related to that, but it's something. And certainly, we have the website to communicate with people, and email, and whatever you choose. Okay, the only other thing that I wanted to say was, I want to bring board members' attention to policy BCA, specifically item number eleven, which says, "To display and demonstrate courtesy and decorum toward fellow board members." This has been lacking in our emails as of late, and I think that it needs to improve. This is the, not the first time I've spoken to the board about this particular policy, but it's the first time this year, and I hope not to have to do it again, because we're grownups, and we're all under a lot of stress, and I know all the parents are under a lot of stress, administration is under a ton of stress, and I'm thinking about those poor, not poor people, but like, I, I feel bad for the people who are burdened with parenting and trying to make this plan, or working full-time and trying to plan for their kids, and it's just, it's, it's an extraordinary situation, and I think we all need to take a step back, take a deep breath, and give each other a little bit of grace, so that's where I'm at. So, moving forward, Ms. Oden, you had one small thing?
Yes, I forgot to say, tomorrow night, finance and operations, there has been something, there was something missing on the agenda, and that is, Mr. Rodriguez is going to be there. I, I have asked him for some numbers on how much it would cost to improve our technology, our bandwidth, so that maybe we could do some more streaming for our kids. I am tremendously concerned about the hour of a week for our high school kids. So he is going to come tomorrow night, and I just want everybody to know, because it didn't make it to the agenda, unfortunately. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Oden. So the other item on our agenda is, the board has a legal services contract to approve this evening, but I understand there are a couple of questions from board members, so I suggest that we have a non-public for that purpose. So I would be looking, so my suggestion also is that we, I think we can, we can let people go, and then simply come back into public and take the vote, if that works for everybody. Except for Dr. McKinney and Mr. Parker, I have a question for you. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-three A three two.
Is it ninety-one, A three?
Yes, what did I say, something different?
You said ninety-three.
Oh, whoops, no, nine, you're correct, Ms. Timmons, ninety-one, A three, two, and I believe it's E. Anyone?
Oh, so move.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Timmons. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Ms. Bishop. Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll?
On the motion to go into non-public, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
I have seven yeses, one no. Motion carries seven to one. We are in non-public at six thirty-nine PM. We're out of non-public at seven eighteen PM.
Okay, welcome back. It is seven eighteen PM, and we are back in public session. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes of our non-public session.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Timmons, seconded by Ms. Johnson. Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Okay, on the motion to seal the minutes, Mr. Guarino votes yes.
Mrs. Johnson votes yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, I'm looking to, for a motion to approve the legal services contract from Goldston and Stores, and an amount not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
So move.
Oh my goodness, that was a lot of people. So Mr. Guarino, and then Ms. Bishop?
Right.
Yep. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I would just like to add two things in there, where we did not to exceed.
Okay, that was, that was in the motion?
Right, but also that we needed to put the amount of time that she's going to be spending with each of us, so we know clearly in the contract, and also, we need to know if there's mileage additional to the eleven thousand five hundred if she's with us.
Okay, so at this time, the motion is to approve services not to exceed that amount. Would you like me to have Mr. Clausen go back and get clarity on that, so that if we, if that's not included, we have to make a new motion?
I think we really need to know that, going into this, you know, whether or not mileage is included in eleven thousand five hundred if she's going to see us, and also how much time she's spending with each board member, so we know how it, the eleven thousand five hundred is being spread amongst all nine of us.
I do know that she, when asked, she said that she would come up here, within that scope, as far as.
If mileage is included in that, that's what we need to know, we said eleven thousand five hundred, the mileage, the cost of miles coming up here, her time traveling, those travel time, really.
Yep, so when she adjusted the contract, it was to include that in the scope.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it's not written in the contract, and this is a legal binding contract, and also how much time she's spending with each board member. We can vote on it and just add it in, have an addendum after, but that needs to be done.
Okay, that would be my suggestion, that we do an addendum, so I'll follow up with Tom Clausen tomorrow. Ms. Timmons?
It's been a little difficult to say how much time you're going to spend with each and every one of us, because she might only spend fifteen minutes with you, but spend an hour with Sharon, who knows? The point is to say you have to spend an hour with each individual, may not be too wise. You spend as much time as you need, so sometimes it may not be much time, and it may be a lot of time.
Well, we can speculate, but let's just ask, and then.
Yeah, but to say, okay, you got to spend an hour with each and every one of them us, I don't think that makes sense, but because we may not need the hour, we may need less time.
No, I agree with you. I just feel like we should just ask her.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I don't see anybody or hear anybody. Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll?
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Mrs. Johnson votes yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, does anyone have any other business before the board this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Ms. Timmons has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson?
Okay, on the, on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Mrs. Johnson votes yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your evening. We are adjourned at seven twenty-two PM.